These guys are here. They're following the same things today, Lord, this can be cured with years of experience for you, Lord. And for yourself, positive, negative, favorable. Students and staff, and students, and we just ask that everybody may at home say to them, continue to provide guidance. And still may we recommend. Please say it.
I welcome students to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my text slide, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Yes, ma'am. So Communities and Schools' mission is to surround students with community support empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. Communities and Schools have been there working, and we see, just as we headed to virtual one back in 2020, by providing support for just a few campuses as a pilot program. In the years since, Communities and Schools has expanded into every campus in our district at a time when we know all too well the heightened mental health and social services needs that our students now continue to address. Since then, Communities and Schools have provided individual case management for over twenty-five hundred students across ECIISD by focusing on improving attendance, behavior, and grades. Most importantly, by limiting barriers and serving as positive mentors for our kids in need for to be successful in school. Our guest of honor tonight knows and embodies what we stand for at ECIISD. She believes in putting her people first, creating sustainable systems, and achieving impactful results. We are so honored today to recognize the CEO of Communities and Schools, Ms. Jessica Weaver, and thank her for amazing work that this organization has done for our communities. Here, please. So we're gonna take a few photos, but then we have a few others, so I'm not done announcing all some of these. If anyone, there you go. There you go. Let her introduce herself in practice. So here with Ms. Weaver tonight for Communities and Schools. We also have Ms. Veronica Sandoval, who is our in-district Communities and Schools Director. If you don't mind standing in the way so you all know who you are. Thank you for what you do. We also have Conroy White, who is the Field Manager for Communities and Schools. Conroy might have laid back for a while. Tonight, we also like to announce and celebrate that our next steps with Communities and Schools are through additional grant funding and scaling funds for Communities and Schools. Over the last year, we've been electing triple our case management load for essential high schools. Through our strong partnerships and because our district values align so well with that of Communities and Schools, Ms. Weaver's theme chose ECIISD as a district partner for a Project Aware grant. Subsequently, we are one of only two districts in the entire state of Texas that rewarded this grant, which has substantially increased our support for mental health efforts. For five years, we'll be working alongside Communities and Schools to expand our reach, servicing more students with more intensive mental health needs. We are now adding six clinical counselors to work with our students at every campus across our district. There is a newly developed community educator who will help our parents through parent education programs as we have partnered with Mrs. Evelyn Quest-Boe. Ms. Quest-Boe, did you stand in the way? From reasons one. She will be providing us full-time consultation and training for our district staff throughout the next five years. To facilitate these efforts, we've also had Ms. Justina Gonzalez, she wasn't able to make it tonight. She's now our Project Aware manager. We also have another special guest here tonight. She's from the Texas Health and Human Services, Mrs. Laura Hernandez-Gold. Mrs. Gold, if you could stand in the way. She is our rare specialist supporting this team through grant implementation. We are so excited about our future with Communities and Schools and grateful to be partnered with this incredible team of leaders who will have a tremendous impact on our community under Ms. Weaver's thoughtful and compassionate ideas. Please say thank you. Give me a picture of the album, one on one. Y'all come on and take a picture.
I'm sorry. I have a healthcare professional. I have one out of two, two out of Texas.
Good man, President. Trustees, first I'd like to play your teacher's job. This lady is back. First arts. Before I do. You can recall the option of the class, where they were no way or is spoken. Added district four, a little more than fifteen years. And its focus, these were students in my school today. They either have taught that high school, they're already recovered, and those students who are simply at this school. So we're here to do the option of the class, which was really very innovative redesign of their baby image of targets so that we can, in hindsight, we can build the access to it. Have to act as a sort of adventure, so they could keep accessing the plans. And so, in the end up, you have their real scene, the total number of students served through our OS program last year. The first table would be breaking out the population of demographics. The second table is also taking off the demographics, the first being ethnicity, gender. The second being those who graduated, those who are continually attracted to graduate, those who are continuing to work in the higher education cases. And here we know of this program, there are multiple years, it's just a new figure. The D case is a different, separated, and progress through boards that, that hold it. Sooner or later, the mission is there. And then it talks about giving a course test, having students which have one of the test coming to complete graduation. Proud to say, as long as somebody sees here, it's those of the program that actually are passing. While there is no separate number, that others passed through, we've been considering that serve with hundreds of students who are kind of active, who have recovered, actually, who just dropped out. It's a very proud, very fat, but effective delivery. So we have the interview question.
I, I personally, um, head staff, I suppose, if I'm going to do it. Um, I think we're, we're aligned, um, essentially, and just continuing to learn, um, all the things that are nutrition, um, but all the need to give, like, these, same things. So, um, a lot of things are sad, but we have to talk a lot, and so, I'm happy that.
Um, I, um, you know, I'm talking about something, um, at this time, I went for the last two days to my school to be a part of the leadership and the B R T. And, um, I was able to spend more time with second day and second two, and then, and then, and then, and then. But, uh, you know, it was just incredible to see the dedication and room and all of the work that everybody used to pay for. And everyone we, um, get the ability to express themselves in regard to what makes everything happen at school. So I was really honored to be there and to be able to, um, watch how that all came about. And so I was just really impressed with the opportunity.
So I don't have any pictures of this one. So we did, uh, right here into the summer, I also went to the meal time, and we went to this, and, uh, maybe stay along this. So we were, uh, to see, uh, in my summarize, it was an agent. Engage everybody who's here, and I love to see very meaningful discussions and, and, and.
Yeah.
Also, uh, on, on the center side, we got a chance to take, uh, to, to, uh, some, uh, before that, that's getting through. That was, uh, it was, it was fun to see the line, and I was like, I love it here. Yeah, it's great to come up there and meet some, some, some stars.
I don't know. As a girl, uh, I just, yeah, thinking about how, you know, because we started back. Anyway, and, uh, Karen, he doesn't actually walk. But I was reflecting, uh, a time that I went to, um, helping this very big issue. And I kind of shared with this comment that I took all of my, um, generally, uh, for, 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 uh, with a closed hand, and it had, um, notes from students and notes from, um, school leaders. And, uh, and it's a feature that will, uh, come.
So the community, which we see that students and solids and parents have to do their, they have concerns, they want us to consider another option they need. And so at the conclusion of several months of conversations together, I'm just today in the community, but together, there was some things for us to consider. They had vocal reading tonight, this review, we created this map between you and a couple of weeks, we guys had a close head workshop, we're sort of in a rush, I wanted you guys to act up to see where that could work on the six.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just kind of what I'd like to do first is just wanted to be, packet that we gave you, I don't know if it's a part of your whole works or anything, I'll, I'll wait until after this, there's no one who did a time on people all back in May, we showed the community about very helps communities, which was done by Dr. Really, we deal with what some of the new data suggesting around how cell phones are impacting the social, emotional, behavioral development of kids today, you know, constantly having better access 24 hours a day, we exist by just the adult content, this really helps to regular implants and active adolescence and overall development. So we started there, and then we went into a town hall, we opened up the community to come, wanted to hear what their thoughts were, we provided some research, we had a very extensive panel, clinicians, students, police officers, teachers, administrators, and we walked through what the research says, and then we asked the panel what their experience is with them, it's very revealing, we applied great questions that came from audiences, comments from parents and students that were there regarding how cell phones impacted their family, not outstanding school, teachers seeing that, learning, health consequences, there's a lot of research for sure that, and any, we offered the opportunity for people to sign up for a committee, so we met several times, we reviewed quite a bit of research and information, and tried to do a good canvass, see about how we can support policy that's currently in place, about the bodies that already got a license, that just make more sense in today's world. So your packet that's in front of you, I was just questioning to go up to the very first page, this is really after about many iterations with the committee, which again, that parents, community members, teachers, district and campus administrators on it as well, it's a very diverse group, we met through, so there's about seven pages of some guidelines that are in there that just provide some, some opportunities for us to consider. And then if you want to turn over that blue tab is, this is our current board policy that's F N C E local, which was adopted in 2011, and it does prohibit itself loans in schools, and the availability of $15 for up to $15. This has been in existence since 2011. Turn over, there's a yellow tab, this is what's currently in our parent student handbook, which conceives one page, which guides us on what to do currently. If you turn to the pink tab, this was the information we shared in the town hall, you can see who all was on the panel as well, when it was at 10:00 that night. We turn over to the purple tab, I'm going pretty quick, because I'm turning it over to somebody. These are just a few of the agendas that we had, so it's the first three agendas that you'll see in there that we had before three meetings. And then you come over to the orange, and we, we took a deep dive in these meetings as other districts' guidelines, as incentive policies, the guidelines, puts in their parents' handbook, that they have across the entire state and some in our local area, and how they've been working through, they gave them current challenges with cell phones in schools. And then last but not least, if you go to the green tab, on the very back, this is just some of the research that we reviewed in articles that have been recent, that have come out about just what we're seeing across the nation, and how they can practice and things in the art of this guy. So I'm very privileged and honored, one of our community members, that has been a part of committees since the very beginning, he's came to the town hall, came to all the other things that we've had, he is a central graduate, his daughter graduated four years ago, just recently graduated from Texas A&amp;M, he's got a son that's in our commissary, who's recently transitioned to the high school very soon, is very invested in this, and very graciously volunteered to come and just, just share with some, over, just some high level summary of what the final seven pages, so I'd like to call on Mr. Brian Kellner from the committee at this point, and I'll try to do so.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, and appreciate the opportunity to be here, thank you to the board for your continuous effort in making ECISD the best it can be, and also allowing an opportunity to discuss our guidelines for cell phones and other telecommunications within our school. Once again, I'm Brian Keller, just a little bit about myself, just like Mr. McGee said, I'm married, married my high school sweetheart many years back, and both of us are decent alumni, my daughter graduated in 2020 from B C, recently graduated from Texas A&amp;M, we also have a second, I volunteer and held leadership roles over the last 20 years with many youth organizations within our church, and also current assistant scout master in our local district, scout trip here in New York. Over the course of the last two years, the reason why I'm here is that I've seen a direct impact on my family, my son, quite barely. I've seen a direct impact on my son's life than so many others regarding technology and politics. Speaking with parents in casual conversation has forced me to realize that not only am I seeing problems, but also so many others. Development of my children are very important to me, they should also be very important to our board, to support whatever means reasonable, to support the best education possible, to support faculty in this difficult time due to the technology problem. Smartphones, the landscape has drastically changed over the last 13 years. Most notably, students have immediate access and continued access to social media, sites, gaming platforms, videos, streaming services, to include better access to adult content 24 hours a day. These platforms have been significantly scientifically developed to hijack attention, which has led to significant negative impact on adolescents' development and learning. Research continues to show that we have seen and will see in our packet, just Mr. McGee says on there, we'll see research data on the back, but I suggest we talk about this as well. Research continues to show that unprescribed access to cell phones and other telecommunications devices in schools have a negative impact on student learning behavior and overall social, emotional, and well-being. During our meeting's re-review, ECISD's current board policy, student parent handbook, read our articles and discussed research numerous times, and typically guide in other different policies than our ECISD policies. In 2011, Eastern Y S D Board Trustees, that's 2011, that's a long time ago, adopted board policy F N C E local, which prohibits cellphone usage during instructional time of the $15 fine to be accessed. The following summary of recommendations are in an effort to support the board policy F N C E, that's all we're trying to do, is to support policies that are real close. Number one, upon the start of the instructional day, first bell, personal telecommunication devices, cell phones or other personal electronic devices must remain silent, turned off, or placed on do not disturb. Cell phones must be stored away to prevent disruption to the learning environment until the end of the instructional day or the last bell signal being dismissed. Number two, there will be limited exceptions where the principal can pre-approve a student to access their phone during the instructional day for special circumstances, typically, but not limited to medical reasons. Some of our students use the phones for touch services and stuff like that, and be able to determine what the touch service is. A doctor's note must be on the file prescribed to the campuses' principal priorship. And also, third, for safety reasons, students are allowed to possess a cellphone or other telecommunications devices while at school, but all students must abide by the district's guidelines at all times, will be subject to disciplinary, disciplinary actions. Guidelines risk follows. At the elementary school, students are not allowed to use their cell phones or other telecommunications devices upon arrival to campus. Once on campus, cell phones or other devices must be silenced, replaced on do not disturb and turned off. All the secondary campuses' students are allowed to use their cell phones or other devices before and after, upon the first bell or the last bell, they cannot use it in between. Other expectations, to help clarify, below. Campuses' administrators will clearly state their expectations at the beginning of the school year. And all campus staff will be required, we suggest, to consistently reinforce the importance of maintaining their phones for each school environment, and will enforce throughout this entire school year and school day. For safety reasons, students are not allowed to use headphones, or would be not allowed to use headphones, earbuds, speakers, or any other devices placed over or inside the ear during instructional day, it takes away what we're trying to do, that's all we're trying to do. If a student is caught capturing video or images of campuses or on campus to promote violence, harassment, intimidation, bullying, promote drugs, alcohol, or any manner deemed to cause a substantial campus disruption, will be subject to disclaring consequences for the student code. During the day, use telecommunications devices strictly prohibited at times in locker rooms, restrooms, dressing, or change rooms. In case of emergencies and a student needs to make a call to a parent or employer, the student may only make a call at the administration office after they have received permission from the campus administration staff. During the class time, a student must follow campus procedures for requesting a pass from the teacher, and only if the teacher allows, may the student be given a pass from the teacher to the administration office. With administrative approval, they are allowed to make the call. If a parent guardian needs to contact student for any reason, they may call the administration office, or the administ, and request a statement for child, administration will go back and remind the student to come to the office for a call. The intent of this, the cellphone or telecommunications license guidelines, are to avoid distractions. Distractions I see, my matrix, my leadership, when I'm working with teams, I cannot teach, I cannot focus, there may be disrespect when they hold their phones. There is an actual video in the form that we saw, I don't know if you know where they're from, we saw this on the floor, of a parent or a teacher coming to the fourth area that was doing a scientific little thing in her, in her classroom, turned the cellphone off, and said, okay, everybody turn your phones on, we're gonna mark down how many actual disruptions there are with here at once, and they count hundreds and hundreds of them going off everybody's phones that day, and that's distraction. The intent of the cellphone, telecommunications license guidelines, are to avoid distractions from learning by improving attention and focus during class, increase the amount of time students are engaged in meaningful learning by limiting the loss of structural time. These guidelines are also in an effort to decrease the number of disciplinary incidents related to cell phones during the school day, to include, but not limited to bullying, threats, harassment, intimidation, unlawful recordings, brief plan of limitations, and other online social media posts that create substantial disruption to the school, which all of these have been accounted for. Thank you for your consideration and time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. I think there's approximately 15 to 20 in the group, one time I think there's 15, for the most part, never. I can tell you this much, we were, I think everybody that was there had concerns, questions, but all of them that we talked about, doing away with existing policy, starting from scratch, we were all aware of the, we liked that scene. That's great. There's a question regarding the safety, I think that the district has a safer than that cellphone, and what we don't want to do as parents, we don't want to say you hang out in response to, they are, communication is effective, we can use it to correct, but unfortunately, before school and after school isn't cool, and we all know that, if a parent has a bad mind, so after school, after school, we're busy lives, we all have busy lives, we're all busy years in the present, and so I like to know what happens. So I think for the most part, I think we would like to have our phones in their possession as long as the system can control the fact that they're not allowed to have, once we break the school phones, and the phones are lost in school classroom, I think that's kind of what we're, we're about, one time I said, hey, I can have it today, but not tomorrow, actually, I was wanting to, this is last year, and then you get it back in two weeks. So that's a problem, and then I have kids telling me that I can't have phones, it's a difficult to hold on, we all realize, we have to have our phones, it's something, so I say, and I am too, the batteries, the batteries, where the quality of education is so important, it's so hard for the teachers to do days without these, so I'm thinking about that. I guess we didn't have, I can leave one or two, we have such two teachers this year, and we had a teacher up there. And some questions regarding cybercrime, they're willing to cybercrime technology, it gets them on, they rely on it, totally required, of course, our school was very scared to be forced technology, and it's built with technology, and then still expect to be, to be able to handle this very, 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 that problem, it's so hard today, I can tell that, of several people that have experienced technology, where you cannot stop a 12-year-old, a 14-year-old going in there and breaking into their phones, and they are getting constantly. We've got all the different apps, long-term safety nets, the order of family wires, all those progress programs, including things that you're going in, safe adult content, they're still there, as I said, I don't have the whole people, but you have to teach your kids, a lot of the other work is right, so, you all have to, the school, the school has a, or a good portion of the great net, the most important point, and I expect that that what I believe, is that to be able to learn from my son at home, and be able to know that I can take care of him, he's at school, I can control the best, I can take his cellphone on, but unfortunately, I'll still be able to get paid for it.
Thank you. The trusties were doing this, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm building, they won't need their cell phone, or, behind our glass.
The trustees were doing this, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's a lot of, I'm back, we were just, especially, particularly, there's[1703.25] And so the teachers don't have to worry about monitoring and managing that. The system itself limits the number of students who can be out utilizing the one restroom at one time. So then when I get back and I check back in, then it opens up for another student to go with it in their space. Yes, ma'am. So the safety monitor said we don't know what to do down there because it's what it is. So that is, so they were able to do some other things for safety and security. And I think that was, really that would do the most of the time instead of losing children that are off and they're going to be in class. And so that was one of the things. A teacher reported that they felt like they could be more teaching because more class, because they want, they didn't have to go back and reteach it, and it was to their kids. So there was a lot of, a lot of positive, and so it just felt like it helped to ease this whole campus culture as well. Because they just knew they were ready to be in class, they were loved. So they were able to say, we've got, we've got to wait up to do that. We have less disciplinary sentences, less issues across the school because kids are in class.
I guess I'm actually, I've got a question. Uh, service and her staff, which were already yesterday, who got, uh, furniture rolling in? Do you, yeah, it's into the.
She looks like she's bad.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So they've been diligently voting for the current, their staff's on Thursday to help with building. Um, of course, we're really, a lot of progress there as well. We care that the building is ready, current existing, all concrete, upgraded lighting, as well as, uh, door open, the conference, the plus, as well, to be raised from the start. Uh, you can see here that they've widened, uh, and we're adding now. So, 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 now. Uh, Oak Press. So Oak Press, we're still working to be here, but, uh, good about staff moving back this Thursday. And it's a big issue here, because we're, uh, to start this lab on this admission here. And then, and then we should have this issue, one of the management problems, they just told us there. That's our new sewer line, so we did a sewer line, we did dry, we did that, and that's ready for start. We do the sort of high end, those that they, because we shouldn't have any impact on staff. Uh, Fowler Elementary School, uh, Fowler Elementary School. Uh, you can see here the site we have, has been excavated, they started doing here this last week. And today, we're going to bring a rig in, double that, because here is next. So there's been this last weekend, that was, well, it was a last person, and then. Society is, well, also it's a tank, and then, sure, water. Don't have any question? So everything's on to administrative staff.
Just needs to order a cap with July, August. We did a little, it was out of line, lots of connected, mentioned earlier, you, you should vote. Second, this is very, very busy. So, there, closing. Um, twenty-four, two days, a little three, it's, uh, seven, maybe back, we're buying there. Hours and recommendations, we're doing some online recommendations to the working office. For, we have now, we have, we're still, continue with our plans for building, uh, it's on our inventory. Four four eight thirty. By forty. Shortly. Calvary. Now twenty third. Thursday next week. District. Session. Last year. Eight thirty. Starts. Two thirty. Moving on. Thirty is especially. We will say. Five thirty. Moving into office. First is. On seven. And thirteen. Yes, it's the high school. And on thirteen. Obviously. Further in August. We shall. Two day. We said. Very awesome.
Good saying. Three on brown.
We actually have much better coverage out there than how they did. What I believe ordering. Big office. We make a little.
First off, I was not here, but. I heard it was crazy. I have.
So the next is the action agenda. And I'm just trying to find considering the action. The first and we're good. Or for which. The single that is three, four, and six.
And then whoever just needs to Google a lot of work required for the election. To pick up this for the rest of the election. We're good. Can I tell you the election? Yes, sir.
So as far as just as I said, there was a fight special for it. So we just. There's a. I would like to. So. So I don't think the word group or the election or that's the. The next item is the tag. We did the recent agent. We should be rich.
So that president possibly be a board height. So. Are we considering endorsing your. To. Your. Have. So we. Here. Like. Certain.
It's. Rich. Please. So there are. Seems to be. And then I reached out just to hear if we could. I want to give a. I don't know my dinner that is. Has been asked. Some of my. And I got this. And then I reached out just to hear if we could. We should be connected and we should correspond to each other was working in your district was something like that, things like that. So him and I agreed to go and reach out for endorsements. We are writing on a post, so we don't need them. But women did it anyway. So I offered our board to maybe discuss and see about. Just. As far as support. So we have here an endorsement from Tasty. The Tasty wants the board to endorse the candidacy of all the individual nominees to go position on the Tasty board directors. The candidate's name is Rich Senna from Hurry and Asti. And Miss Grayson Hosses. So I guess I'm just asking for the board's endorsement for Rich Senna. Do I have a motion? So. In a second. Everybody in Dayton endorse Mr. Senna?
Hi.
Hi. All right, votes. Motion carries. And I just want to add that Ginger automatically got her seat again because no woman against her. Yeah, you should have seen it. All right. So the next item is. Can I correct because I, my agenda is attached to the front of this, so I have to. Okay, so yeah, the next item is. Sorry, I lost my, on front of my paperwork. Nine point three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five employee compensation schedule. Mr. Scott.
Trustees, the compensation handbook is attached in your electronic packet. You're aware that the last meeting of the board trustees, the board did approve a teacher salary increase. By way of reminder, that increase is an average of eighteen hundred and seven dollars per teacher, which was an average of two point seven eight percent. The teacher starting salary was also increased by the board to fifty eight thousand five hundred dollars. Due to funding constraints, which we are experiencing along with all of our public education. Partners across the area of state, we weren't able to recommend much more than that. But we are here tonight asking for your consideration for a two percent employee increase for administrators, paraprofessionals, auxiliary and technology staff. We also, as we do every year, look at the distribution of pay for goals as it relates to market. And sometimes in addition to the adjustment in salary increase we proposed, we also bring positions that are outside of the market. Even with that increase into the market range. And so there's been some adjustments for those positions as well. And so some of those positions, instead of two percent, are receiving two point three, two point one percent, for example, which is the raise plus the difference to get into the market comparability. We also looked at stipends and in particular, due to staffing challenges, we've been working over the last year. You're aware it was strategic about the way the staff. And to look at other innovative ways to staff our classrooms with the most effective teachers. And so we, in one part of that, in taking in all the residents we could possibly get out of UTSA in the same time. So typically. College student goes and they prep program. They get to their last year and do. Find requirements. And to teach a twelve year experience. Those were some of the certain issues. Residency model is a full year. So that particular model, we found these teachers that are much more than their first classroom experience. And so we pay them two thousand five hundred dollars. To be a resident for a year under the direction of our most experienced teachers. And so that scenario, that ranking, it will give. Depending on circumstances, the rank will decide. Some cases, it might look like a teacher with traditional size classroom with a resident. That particular case decided with the three thousand five hundred. Some other instances, you might have a master teacher that takes on a larger sort of combination with a resident. Because of circumstances, we would rather put a master teacher with a larger number of students than a free student who has a specialized experience. Or maybe a substitute while we're looking for a certified teacher. And so in a situation like that, they're fighting for. Most extreme case, we have, we will have some resident post teachers earning stipends, which is a thousand dollars. So that's a different condition. Including compensation angle for that very specific. So last year, all of. Every scenario is not the same. We'll also, we also wish you guys very aware, we should be. Mount Great and make transition drivers. Have tasks to have to do recognition from out there. But in doing so, we. Drivers. Now they're smart. Differentiating years of experience. And that's, that's up. As far as monitors. Six hundred dollars. And so those are substantial increases. You should have. Great discompeted. Here's the option. And that's. Space. So those are the major lessons that we see. They will actually. Has to consider. Or. Situation. And all. All cases. Those make certain. This week, we're the highest. Those. Chip.
We're close to the top. And we, with our other benefits that we offer in this year, we feel we're very competitive. The advocacy, the transportation department got the advocacy going out. We've done very fantastic things in our employment. Here's still a little short, but we've got a plan on how we can make more. I appreciate the thoughts going out by room and speaking or in the market. All right, so. I recommend board people. So the next item. The next item, I'm ten days. So. We want to have a motion to. All the. All the votes. So next item is going to be. The board will be into a discussion. I was going to do. Okay, the board trustees on July eighteenth, before the meeting is booked for three P M. Will be near closing in at four thirty. We need to pack the whole section. Five five one zero seven four. For a super team evaluation.